Good evening. This meeting of the City of Kingston Zoning Board of Appeals will now come to order. It is 6 o'clock PM. My name is Tony Arkalevich and I will be chairing this proceeding. I will take a moment to explain how the Zoning Board of Appeals functions. The board is comprised of five members and two alternates. We have been appointed to serve the citizens of the City of Kingston. We perform this service to the best of our abilities on a voluntary unpaid basis. The other board members are, please introduce yourselves.
Mary Ann Hubel.
Joe Fitzgerald.
Brian Cafferty.
Ari Goldstein.
Okay. John Badamita Goldman's absent and Owen Harvey are absent. Ari, you'll be a voting member this evening as alternate, but you're going to be voting, okay?
All right.
On the issues. Okay, there's a little change in procedure, but I'll read the statement. There will be a period for public comment this evening after each variance request has been presented. We also will start with a public hearing on the first agenda item, which is an appeal of the zoning enforcement officer's decision regarding property in the City of Kingston, the Kingstonian. We will have a public hearing on that first, but after each variance request has been presented, I'll ask for public comment. This period, but this applies for both, the zoning officer's appeal as well as the variance request, these particular sentences apply to both. This period is an opportunity for individuals to make a statement of opinion, not to engage in debate. Each speaker must state their name and address for the record. They can step up to the microphone in the front. Each speaker must state their name and address for the record. As I said, speakers must be brief and to the point, must be brief and to the point, and give everyone a chance to speak. Speakers must address the board as a whole, not individual members. I want to emphasize that individual members of the board should not be addressed, it should be addressed as a whole. And not other speakers or audience members should be addressed. A professional demeanor is expected, again, a very important point. Okay, we're going to start with public hearing on the first item. As I said, we have attorneys present for both the Kingstonian as well as firm Rodenhausen Chael Polidoro Attorneys for 61 Crown Street LLC, 311 Wall Street LLC, 317 Wall Street LLC, and 323 Wall Street Owners LLC. There is an appeal of the determination of the City of Kingston zoning enforcement officer as it relates to the Kingstonian development. I'll be reading the appeal language specifically, but that's the general idea of the appeal and we will entertain public comment on that appeal. Again, please state your name and address. As you come up to the mic, I'll recognize you with a show of hands who wants to participate in that public comment and I'll call you up to the mic. Did we have a sign-in list for, do I have it? I can just use the list? Did you have a sign-in list prior?
Yes.
Okay, so as you speak, you'll sign, not beforehand. Okay, if you raise your hand, I'll recognize you to come up if anyone wants to speak regarding that appeal of the determination of the zoning enforcement officer regarding Kingstonian as it relates to the Kingstonian, okay? No one, all right? Having no one, we will keep the public hearing open and accept written comments until February 28th. So if you feel more comfortable putting in a written comment, it can be submitted till the end of business day in the building safety department to Mr. Knox or Mr. Kitchen and the zoning board will receive those written comments. And that's until February 28th, written comments till the end of the business day. All right? Okay, let's get into our agenda then. First order of business, approve the minutes for the 12:12 2019 meeting. Thank you, Eric, for good job on the minutes. I see no additions or deletions or corrections unless other board members do. I have a motion to approve. Joe?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Closed? We have five voting members tonight, right? Five. Next order of business, as I mentioned, we have two attorneys, I believe, in the audience, one representing the properties that I cited, Rodenhausen Chael Polidoro, representatives there from that firm. Want to come up to this, please? Up here, you get one more section up. Okay, you could state your name and
Sure.
Firm and address.
Hi, Victoria Polidoro. I'm a partner at Rodenhausen Chael Polidoro. We're at 55 Chestnut Street in Reinbeck.
Before I read the actual appeal language, I just want to make a statement. I would respectfully request, as a request of all parties presenting information to the board, that your presentation be concise and to the point, keeping in mind that we are neither attorneys or judges, just regular laypeople. So with that, I'm going to read for the record the actual appeal language. And I'm reading from a letter from your firm, Rodenhausen Chael Polidoro, on November 26, 2019, addressed to Anthony Arkalevich Chair and members of the Zoning Board of Appeals as well as Eric Kitchen, zoning enforcement officer, regarding the appeal of the zoning enforcement officer's determination. Dear Chair Arkalevich, zoning enforcement officer Kitchen, and members of the Zoning Board of Appeals, this firm represents 61 Crown Street LLC, 311 Wall Street LLC, 317 Wall Street LLC, and 323 Wall Street Owners LLC, known as the applicants. Owners of property within the City of Kingston Mixed Use Overlay District, abbreviated MUOD, by letter dated September 27, 2019, the City of Kingston zoning enforcement officer, abbreviated Z, capital Z, capital E, capital O, and the overlay district were all capitals too, capital M, capital U, capital O, capital D. The zoning enforcement officer determined that the City of Kingston zoning law, Section 405-27.1, permits the construction of new buildings containing residential uses within the capital M, capital U, capital O, capital D, and that such buildings are exempt from the affordable housing requirement otherwise applicable to residential units in the capital M, capital U, capital O, capital D. The copy of the determination is attached here too, and I'm sure we will be discussing that in Ms. Polidoro's presentation. My clients are now compelled to appeal the ZEO's determination because it lacks a rational basis and unfairly benefits the owners of the Kingstonian project to the detriment of owners of existing structures in the capital M, capital U, capital O, capital D. I wish I could say that, but muad. We note at the outset that the applicants are supportive of the Kingstonian project but concerned that the determination of the ZEO would encourage the demolition of existing structures and replacement with new structures in order to avoid a mandatory 20% affordable housing requirement and place owners of existing structures within the stockade districts at an economic disadvantage in adaptively reusing historic properties for residential uses. Ms. Polidoro, did I accurately state the rationale for the appeal in the appeal?
You did, and I forgot how well I said it in my letter, so I won't repeat that.
Okay. Please proceed and we can ask questions if, or would you rather they be at the end?
Yeah, no, that's fine. You can interrupt if you have a question.
Okay.
So at the outset, I am compelled again to ask you to continue the public hearing until your next meeting. I know that it was advertised in the paper, but your agenda did not state that it was a public hearing, and I found it confusing, and I don't know if other members of the public found that confusing.
Well, I guess I'm going to interrupt you right off the bat, but I'm reading the agenda and it says, "The Kingston City Zoning Board of Appeal announces a public hearing on Thursday, February 13, 2020, at 6:00 PM at City Hall Council Chambers." That's what it says on my agenda.
Okay, well, the agenda that I looked at last week did not have that.
The one that was sent to you didn't have that? Okay, I apologize for that.
Yeah, I didn't receive one. I looked it up online.
Oh, okay, but they'd have it on there.
Okay. Okay, so just to start, a little bit about standard of review, I don't know how often you do interpretations. I do represent some zoning boards and I know that they don't come up very often. So to start, I'm sure that a lot of you know Mr. Kitchen and like Mr. Kitchen. I've spoken with him on the phone before. But your role as members of the zoning board is to review the issue de novo. You're not to give Mr. Kitchen any deference. Part of his job is to make decisions and your job is to overrule them when necessary. You also don't have to like the outcome or result of your decision. Policy is up to the common council. They can change laws, they can rewrite laws, that's in their purview. Your job tonight is to look at the law as it's written and all of the contextual documents that we've provided you to try to interpret what the law says. What was the intention of the mixed-use overlay district? So I think the issue tonight is pretty simple. Does the underlying C2 zoning district and the MUOD overlay district allow new residential units? And if it does allow new residential units, are those units subject to a 20% affordable housing requirement? If you look in your zoning law at the list of the C2 permitted uses, there's a use table and you can look at it, residential uses are not permitted. I've made that assertion, Mr. Moriello has not challenged that assertion. I think perhaps hopefully we can stipulate to the fact that new residential uses are not allowed in your underlying zoning district.
As a use by right?
By right or by special permit or by site plan, it's just not permitted.
What about a use variance?
I mean, sure, use variances would allow them, but as you know, use variances should be granted very sparingly. You can't
There's a high threshold, absolutely.
Very high threshold.
But I didn't want to give the impression that there weren't avenues where someone could pursue something that's not listed as a use by right?
Okay, so, right, anyone can always apply for a use variance, but outside of a use variance, which as I said is to be used very sparingly, it's not a permitted use. So an overlay district works by adding additional uses on top of that zoning. So C2 zoning says you can't have a residential use, then the mixed-use overlay district adds uses on top of that. In this case, the only way to get a residential use would be if the mixed-use overlay district allows it. So Ulster County Planning Department actually reviewed this. They sent a letter to the common council dated September 4, 2019, and I'm just going to read you some excerpts from it because I think they said it very well.
Excuse me, the date, it was September?
September 4, 2019, and I'll give you a copy when I'm done reading. So they said, "It is important to understand the use of overlay districts within zoning statutes. Overlay zones add regulations on top of the districts that they encompass." Then it goes on to say that "the MUOD," or muad, whatever we want to call it tonight, "like other overlay districts, does not alter the underlying uses permitted in the C2 zone except for providing for multifamily housing when associated with adaptive reuse. This is made clear in the language within the statute and reinforced by a review of the DGIS that again speaks to the purposes of the MUOD." They go on to go through the zoning and the county concludes that "the C2 district does not provide for the development of newly constructed mixed-use structures, nor does it allow multifamily structures." So the counties reviewed this, they came up with a similar opinion, and I'm going to give this
But this was a letter again from the planning board?
This was a letter to the common council.
To the common council.
As you're aware, the common council is considering a rezoning of a portion of the Kingstonian property to be mixed-use overlay district, and the county said, basically said, "Why are you doing this? It doesn't help you." That was the conclusion in their letter. So that's how overlay districts work. They go on top of the underlying district. So in the mixed-use overlay district, it states that "the following uses are subject to issuance of a special permit. One, conversion of existing commercial or industrial buildings or sections of them into residential apartments. Some space will be dedicated as affordable housing." So that is one use that's now permitted in the underlying C2 district that wasn't permitted before the MUOD was adopted. Then somewhat inartfully, it says, "Two, site and building enhancements that promote a mixed-use, mixed-income, pedestrian-based neighborhood." So when Mr. Kitchen was asked to determine whether new residential uses were permitted in the mixed-use overlay district, he looked at Section 1 and said, "Well, no, not Section 1 because it's not conversion of an existing building." So then he went to Section 2 that says, "Site and building enhancements that promote a mixed-use, mixed-income neighborhood." And his interpretation was that that phrase was broad enough to encompass new residential In our opinion, this stretches that term "site enhancements" too far and it results in an absurd reading of your zoning law. Any use that's not permitted is now permitted as a site enhancement, so long as it provides a sidewalk and is walkable. It nullifies the concept of having a list of permitted uses because now every conceivable use can come in as a quote-unquote "site enhancement." So for instance, I could build a factory producing dog food, but so long as I'm putting in a sidewalk and planting trees, that's now a permitted use in your walkable stockade district. I think it stretches, the interpretation goes too far. So when you interpret a zoning law, the ZBA is bound by certain rules. The first is that you have to read the law in a way which would not render it meaningless. A broad interpretation of site enhancements to include every conceivable use renders the rest of the mixed-use overlay district meaningless. If you go through the mixed-use overlay district, it talks about affordable housing and it talks about adaptive reuse. To take that one phrase to mean every other conceivable use, it nullifies every word that comes before it. The whole section was about mixed uses and adaptive reuse. It also goes against the numerous references in the mixed-use overlay. It also goes against the finding statement, which I provided to you on Monday. You should all have a copy of that, and I will go through that in a minute.
Excuse me, the what?
The finding statement.
Oh, the seeker?
Yeah, the seeker statement. So when you're interpreting zoning, you have to look at the intent of the provisions. So we've provided you with the seeker statement and contemporaneous newspaper articles, which all repeatedly discuss adaptive reuse as the purpose of the law, and they support the interpretation that the MUOD does not allow mixed use, does not allow new residential units. So back in 2004, the common council recognized that the lack of residential uses in the stockade district was a problem. When it was evening, on weekdays, there weren't enough people walking around the stockade district to generate business. Landowners that wanted to put apartments above their buildings had to obtain a variance to do so, and it was probably a use variance. The result was the enactment of the mixed-use overlay district. If you look at the seeker statement on page three, it explains that "the City of Kingston is faced with a housing shortage. Permitting the conversion of vacant and underutilized industrial and commercial buildings to multifamily rental and affordable housing while maintaining commercial and retail activities on the first floor is designed to help alleviate this situation." So the purpose of the law was to convert vacant and underutilized industrial, commercial structures. Further on page three, it explains that "the proposed action would create a new overlay zoning district." That's the MUOD. "Within the overlay zoning district, new regulations would be established for adaptive reuse of vacant or underutilized commercial and industrial buildings through special use permit provisions. No effect would occur to the underlying zoning district or to uses or structures that don't meet the special conditions." So again, it's saying, "We're only talking about adaptive reuse here. We're going to put certain design requirements on it, nothing else is changing." On page five of the finding statement, it says, "Adaptive reuse of commercial and industrial buildings should be subject to design guidelines to ensure that rehabilitation, conversion, renovation, et cetera," there's a lot more words in there, "maintain their historical integrity and supports mixed-use, pedestrian-friendly urban environment." So this speaks to how the term "site enhancements" went in there. Site enhancements is a design guideline meant to complement the adaptive reuse of those buildings. Further on page six, it says, "The historical integrity of industrial buildings should not be injuriously affected." So if you review those finding statements, you'll see that the common council was very focused on how do we bring life to the stockade district? How do we provide a way for people to live there without ruining the historic fabric of our community? What we end up with in this interpretation is somewhat perverse. The interpretation actually encourages people to knock down existing buildings in order to avoid the 20% affordable housing requirement. The MUOD says that you can have residential units, but you have to have a 20% affordable housing set aside. That was the trade-off. We'll let you put in these apartments, but you have to give us affordable housing. So the interpretation that we're appealing now says, "Only existing structures have to put in affordable housing. If you knock your structure down and you build new, there's no affordable housing requirement." This clearly goes against preservation. It goes against reuse of buildings. It can be damaging to the historical integrity of the stockade district. A 20% affordable housing set aside can be significant in a redevelopment project. It also results in a somewhat absurd interpretation of zoning law in that it's commonly understood that adaptive reuse is expensive. Bringing old buildings up to code so that they can be used for residences often requires firewalls and you have to move staircases, you have to put in sprinkler systems. It is much easier to build new residential apartments from scratch. You know, there's no asbestos, there's no lead. So providing an incentive to owners of historic structures to redevelop by allowing them to have apartments was the purpose of the mixed-use overlay. Now this interpretation provides a disincentive to maintain those existing structures. If you have an existing structure, you have to set aside 20% affordable housing. If you knock it down, or if you're building new, you don't have to provide affordable housing. Unfortunately, this determination creates a loophole, and you know, my clients own property within the district, they want to be treated fairly, and they purchased in Kingston because they love the historic stockade district. And so this really disincentivizes adaptive reuse. That's the argument in sum, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
It was concise and to the point.
Good. Try. Can I give you this letter?
Yeah, to Mr. Kitchen there, he'll give it to us. I'm going to open the questions of the board. I have one question. To your knowledge, I'm assuming you would know this, but I know what happens when you assume, somebody once told me, but what are the specific plans for the Crown Street property? And has there been an application to the planning board yet for those plans?
So it's somewhat irrelevant, but I will say that the Crown Street property is still being leased by the school district.
Oh, it is?
They're still occupying the building.
Paid my taxes at the other building.
They're still, they're still in the building, they're still moving boxes out. You're welcome to go knock on the door and look. There's tons of school district files and boxes. So they haven't, to the best of my knowledge, they haven't provided an end date. So they're still in the building. And part of the reason why we're looking for this interpretation is because it's hard to plan a redevelopment project when you don't know whether you're going to have to put aside 20% affordable housing when the property down the street is not putting aside any affordable housing. Of course, now there is a voluntary 10%, but we're looking for clarity.
So I'll take that answer as no, you haven't submitted plans to the
No, no, there have been no plans yet. Like I said, the school district is still a tenant of the building.
I don't believe everything I read in the paper, but I sometimes use it as a reference point, but I believe when that building was purchased, there was consideration that it was going to be a boutique hotel?
That was, that was the intention. There have since been a lot of hotel units built, both within the City of Kingston and in the outlying areas, they keep putting up those hotels, so
So conceivably, there may be other plans to make that building into condos, apartments, or something of that nature instead of a boutique hotel?
Yes, I mean, residence is on the table as an option, multifamily residence.
Okay, thank you.
I have one question on Crown Street. Would you also be, would that be a mixed use also, or just residential?
You know, there's no firm plans at this point. They're going, they're working on plans, and so I think they're waiting on the outcome of this to see whether they would be required to put 20% affordable housing in. That does make a difference. Again, the building, I don't know if you've seen it, it's in disrepair, it needs lots of upgrades.
But the reason I ask that question is somewhere within your briefs, I mean, there's a lot of paperwork here. I think I remember reading, maybe it was in the appeal complaint, but there was a statement to the effect that these properties would be at a disadvantage, economic disadvantage if this were allowed to proceed?
Yes.
That kind of implied that there were some plans to determine an economic disadvantage, you need to have a plan that's going to create the economic disadvantage.
Like I said, they're in the planning stages and I mean, I think it's just common understanding that if one owner has to put 20% affordable housing aside and the neighboring owner doesn't, that the one that doesn't is at an economic disadvantage.
Maybe the new, maybe the new owner doesn't either, have to either.
So I understand your questions, but we're here tonight just to really look at what your law says.
Well, I'm here to make a determination on all the information Well, I'm here to make a determination on all the information presented to me, and I respect your documents, but I also have auxiliary questions that will help me make my decision.
So, okay, just so I was clear, residential use is on the table for 61 Crown Street. Plans have not been submitted, but it is an option for redevelopment of that structure.
Thank you. Rest of the board, Mary?
One question, though, too. Are you also looking at the structure of each building? The one for the Kingstonian, how, you know, the stability of it versus Crown Street?
What do you mean by stability?
Well, if the building is not stable enough to be renovated, okay, and has to be taken down for that reason, are you looking at that also?
So, no. I mean, that would be a very site-specific question, and here, this interpretation applies to every structure within the mixed-use overlay district. So every owner of property in the Stockade District within the mixed-use overlay has this choice of saying, "Should I try to knock my building down? Or should I provide 20% affordable housing?" If they wanted to redevelop their properties.
It's not quite, I don't want to give the public the impression that it's quite that easy. The Stockade is within the landmark designated area of Kingston...
Right, and they'd have to get approval.
Under the auspices of the Historic Landmark Preservation Commission, which has to issue preservation notice of action in order to demolish a building. We can't just start bringing in the wrecking ball in the Stockade area.
That's true. You do have to get approval. But if your building is in a state of disrepair and it's expensive to renovate, that is one of the things that the committee will take into consideration. And also, that speaks to the fact that this one landowner is getting a benefit that nobody else can get because it's the only vacant parcel in that area. They are getting to put up a structure without having to deal with the affordable housing requirements that everyone else has to think about or deal with.
Brian? I'm sorry, Joe?
I have no questions.
Is it, is it your contention that the new construction doesn't require any affordable housing requirements because the code is moot on that point?
Sadly, sadly, it's my contention that the new construction's not allowed at all. The C2 district does not allow new residential units, and the mixed-use overlay does not allow residential units. But if however you find that it does, then my contention is that you have to apply the 20% affordable housing to everyone in the district. Otherwise, the, the result is nonsensical.
Thank you.
Ari?
Yeah, I think for purposes, purposes of clarification, this parcel in question, there's, you know, I think, to be clear, there is, it's my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, there is an existing building, once a hotel, then referred to as the Kingstonian, now a storage facility for toxic paints, other building materials, that's been condemned, that would be raised under different circumstances. And across the street from that, on a surface lot, is going to be the construction of this quote, "mixed-use parking lot residential unit." Is that, that's correct, right?
I mean, Mike Moriello can speak to the specifics of the project more, but yes, that's my understanding.
The specifics are pretty important, aren't they?
The Herzog's building is coming down.
Right.
And two, two buildings are being, one's being built at the site of Herzog's and one's being built on the other side of the street.
Correct. It was my understanding that the, that the Herzog's building, formerly the Kingstonian Hotel, is in a state of disrepair and would be raised anyway because it's structurally unsound. Is that, is that accurate?
That's my belief, that that building potentially would go, if it weren't being part of this process in the Kingstonian, it probably would be going to, the owners would be going to the Historic Landmark Preservation Commission for a preservation notice of action to demolish. That, I am not a owner of the building. I don't know, I don't know the owner's thinking, but that was the impression that I have gotten, yes.
So following the letter and spirit of the mixed-use overlay district, if that building was in such a state of disrepair and you couldn't build residential units anywhere else, now the mixed-use overlay district provides an incentive for owners to fix up these buildings which are in a state of disrepair. Because if you can't put residential housing in the district otherwise and there's a lack of housing, now it makes monetary sense. So...
I have to keep correcting you. You can put residential housing in there by coming to the zoning board, as we every month have use variances. And you need to show that you have a financial hardship. You need to show you can't make a reasonable return. I know the threshold, but I'm sorry, I have to keep correcting you on that point. There can be use variances for residential.
Sure, but for purposes of the zoning law, I mean, use variances are always available when something's prohibited. For purposes of this discussion, I think we should leave use variances out, only because, you know, you can always get them no matter if something's permitted or prohibited. We're talking about whether something on its face is permitted or prohibited.
But we, we were talking about a building being demolished and residential put in place of it, if in fact it was going to be demolished because of other reasons other than development. In that case, there would have to be a use variance.
No, that's okay.
It's also my understanding that, that the intended use for the building site that is to be demolished is to be a hotel and not residential. Is that correct?
No, there's, there's, I believe when we saw the diagram, there were residents, apartments on both sides of the street.
Okay, that's a, that's a, that's a change then.
Can we just clarify, there's more than one lot, there's at least three, I believe, right? There, yeah. So the former warehouse building, which was formerly a hotel but was added on to significantly, that's where the proposed redevelopment and new boutique hotel is going to go on that part of the, that part, that parcel. And then the old parking garage is where the retail and, and apartments are going to go for the most part.
I thought, correct me if I'm wrong, we have the attorney. Apartments are on both sides of the street? I think I asked that question when you were making your presentation. On both sides of the street. And both sides. Okay, Ari, do you have any more questions?
No, not this time. Thanks.
Anyone else, more questions? Thank you very much for your presentation, and do you have any questions of us?
Sure. Could I ask for a few minutes at the end to address any additional comments?
Well, we can, we, I will consult with attorneys, but if everybody wants a final say, we'll never be out of here, so let me, you know what I'm saying?
I have no problem with both of them being given a briefer bottom.
On both of them, yeah.
As long as it's...
Both of you have an opportunity to speak.
Okay.
After you speak, Mr. Moriello will speak, and then that'll be it. No more speaking.
Understood. Thank you.
Okay. All right, at this point, I'd like to call Mr. Moriello up. We'll take a two-minute break. Three minutes? Is that enough time?
I'm not getting five.
All right, I'll give you five. I might take five with you.
Where do you want to go?
Okay, as you get settled, Mr. Moriello will take care of...